Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started with roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor LaBarre?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp Case?
Here.
Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. This evening, we have item 3A ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we have a presentation of the first Purple Heart sign for the city of Woodland Park, and our presenter is John Bartlett.
Thank you. I have a little tradition I do. Council and citizens, every time that I get a chance to speak in public, it's a real short prayer. It's Heavenly Father, please give me the words for this presentation, help me answer the questions, and tell me when to shut up. Amen. So here we go. My golly, I thank you for this time. I appreciate it so much. And thank you for my brand-new hearing aids from the VA. So this time, I'll be able to hear what is going on when I'm speaking. My name is John Bartlett. Let me introduce myself. And I am very blessed this evening. Ms. Erin Finkel is here to help me. She's representing females in active duty and guard and reserve and veterans. I think she came down kind of last minute to help me out here a little bit. Thank you. Okay. Good news, from a veteran's point of view, from active duty point of view, the few that I've talked to, and the families, the rally was a blessing and a good thing. The Purple Heart trail sign was also a success. It's got a lot of good positive comments. A little earlier, I got to speak on some other positive comments that we got on the healing and involvement of the council. Thank you, council, for the leadership. Thank you for administrative help, getting our proclamation written. Thank you for the guidance for a guy who didn't know what he was really doing and was just blundering along on getting it done. We were blessed. We have a special little part of this I'd like to share with you. We started a legacy with this rally in helping veterans. I have a pin on it. Maybe some of you cannot see it. We have pins for everybody, and if you'd like to have one, it says, "Let the legacy continue." If you're a little shy about wearing them, my granddaughters wear them with pride. But it's a good chance to talk to the children about what a Purple Heart means. And the Purple Hearts for those wounded or killed in action in the actual battle that our country puts us into in our wars. Go ahead and pass them out, Karen. Thank you.
I have mine. Thank you so much.
The special blessing in my mind for our Purple Heart sign is that we have been blessed with donations.
Thank you.
Pro Promotions and Jim Ware. Thank you. Yeah, there it is. Thank you. We have been blessed with donations. Jim Ware and Pro Promotions donated the first sign that you saw at the event. I'm gonna hang this on the floor. My mother would be appalled about it. This is the actual sign. And the blessing of the donations came from the American Legion here, Woodland Park, and the VFW here at Woodland Park. From Councilman Frank Connors donated. Yes, he did. I jumped on the bandwagon and donated too. You know, I was kind of in a leadership position in a way. And I learned as a young lieutenant, lead by example. Great. Got to lead by positive example in my mind. And so I wanted, if I'm asking you about signs, then maybe I ought to buy one myself. We have, Mayor, we have enough people committed for five signs, maybe six for Woodland Park.
That's wonderful.
And we feel that's helpful. Type in, it's up to the council and you to decide where the signs are to be placed and properly installed. The only thing the Military Order of the Purple Heart asks is that it be in an honorable place, in a place where people get the chance to see it, to help memorialize the Purple Heart and the sacrifices of the family too. Mayor Pro Temp, you wanted to?
Yes, at the rally, at John's request, I did prepare and read a proclamation declaring Woodland Park a Purple Heart city. And I have the document here framed. And I just wanted to tell John and share with the public that we'll hang this here in City Hall in the council chambers so that that is available for the public to see as well.
Thank you.
It was my honor, John.
It was. It was an end run, Hail Mary. She got it done really quick, really fast, her and the daughter. Wow, that was... Military Order of the Purple Heart is a fraternal organization of veterans awarded, or recipients of Purple Hearts. They require a proclamation. They require a gathering, an event, and they require the placement to be taken care of by the community leaders. We fulfilled all three of those type requirements that they gave to us. So we're doing good there. I'd like to present the sign to you personally.
Sure. And also, John, I believe that we'll have you meet privately with our staff to determine placements as well. Is that right, Suzanne?
It is. I did want, if you want to share where the first sign will go, Mayor?
The first sign is going to go at the entrance of the city to Woodland Park. And it will be where we have some other signature signs.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
We were hoping for each entrance to the city.
We can accomplish that.
Memorial Park would, your choice.
Well, we'll have your help with it. So did you want to do a photo now? Are you sure?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like all of council in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll come down.
I'm gonna grab that clock. It's not in the picture.
All right. Thank you very much, John, for the presentation and for bringing this to our community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item four, we have nothing. Item five, consent calendar, 5A, consideration of ordinance number 1459, series 2023. And this is consent calendar. Counsel, I either need a motion or?
Madam Mayor, I can make a motion with an explanation. Is that okay?
That's fine.
I would like to make a motion not to consider 5A this evening. And my rationale is this: We still have a citizens initiative that's being considered and may go to vote. And I feel like, at this time, we should wait for a final ordinance or code that addresses short-term rentals be approved before we begin to address Title V of the code. As of today, we have nothing in the code except those items that we make our own interpretations of addressing short-term rentals. We don't even have a definition of short-term rentals in the code at this point in time. And for that reason, while I think there's merit in this particular item, I think we should wait until after the citizens initiative has reached fruition, or comes to resolution, and then we can reintroduce this at that time.
Well, if I can give you the other side of that, Carol, the reason, the rationale, if you like.
Hey, hang on. Let me just point something out real quick to you guys. The consent calendar is not discussion. If you want a discussion on the topic, it should have been under new business. So consent is motion and vote. That's the problem with this topic, where it's placed. So I let you qualify your motion if you want to re-qualify the motion.
No, it's as qualified as I can get it.
Then I either need a second or not. It'll either pass, or there'll be nothing done, or fail.
To clarify, the motion is that you moved to disapprove Chris, and I'll second that.
I just have to check with the city attorney. Is that okay? Because either you make the motion and then you vote no on it. Do you make a motion?
Any, that motion, she made the motion first. That motion's appropriate.
Okay. Okay, counsel. You may vote, counsel.
So the motion on this voting says motion to approve?
Right, because it's plugged in from the agenda, so I have to make a manual note to change it.
Okay, so.
Wait, so then?
If the motion is to approve, then we would vote, if we want to approve the ordinance, we would vote yes. If we do not want to.
That's why I just thought if you just made the typical motion and just voted.
That's why I asked about re-clarifying the motion, like.
Can I just say two questions about process?
Yes.
I just feel compelled, but I need to.
Please.
We always put initial postings on, that's council's new rules and procedures, that initial postings go on the consent calendar. Counsel at any time can vote to take it off the consent calendar, move it somewhere else on the agenda if they would like to. So I just have to remind counsel of that option. Second option is, if you want to just vote on approval, and then if you don't want to approve it, you can just vote no, rather than changing what we have in the motion.
So does Councilmember Harvey want, you could choose to withdraw your motion if you'd like. My motion was to not approve item 3A.
So then what we can do is we'll do a manual vote. Disregard this.
Well, Madam Mayor, generally, wouldn't the appropriate way to do that is to remove it off the consent calendar so we can have discussion on it? And then, isn't that what we've typically done with items that we want to have some sort of discussion about?
You can make a motion, but a motion was made ahead of you to vote on the item. So basically, what happens is you got beat to it. Like, had Carol not made her motion and you made a motion to move it?
Oh, I see.
Then we could have moved it, but because that didn't happen, Carol's motion comes first and must be voted on.
And as a further point of information, if, in fact, I waited, I waited, and there was this pregnant pause, and I jumped in. If you had wanted to move it to new business, it would still be initial posting, and we wouldn't be discussing it tonight at any rate. So this was under the consent calendar, under the new revised procedures for the council, which are still confusing to me. But nonetheless, I made the motion to disapprove this item on the agenda.
So, and just one, for the electronic voting purposes, if we have clicked on a button, we can't un-click it.
I can do that for you. I can, I'm just gonna, this whole thing is gonna get wiped out.
So I was just.
And we're gonna do, we're gonna do a regular vote, a voice vote. And the motion on the table is to disapprove ordinance number 1459 from moving forward to public hearing. Any further discussion before we continue?
So the way you're now making this, we're gonna do a manual vote. And if you want it to stay on the calendar, you vote no. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Proceed.
Everyone clear?
Yeah.
Okay, just because once you vote, that's it. Okay. LaBarre?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Nakai?
No.
Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. So motion carries 4 to 3 with Zuluaga, Nakai, and Connors voting no. So this will not move forward to public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question for our attorney. So what does that, what does that mean legally in terms of the process?
It doesn't move forward, but yeah, you could, according to your procedures, bring it back again.
Okay, thanks. And Suzanne?
Sir?
Do we just click on something to get this off our screen?
I will get it off your screen.
Yeah.
Okay, is it gone?
Okay, no.
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 Refresh your screen.
All right.
Now mine says vote for public comment. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're good. We're good.
But how do I get rid of that?
Click on save.
Okay.
Select something, abstain or whatever. Okay.
All right, off to six, public comment on items not on the agenda. And Suzanne, do you have people signed up for that?
I do. I have just one person this evening, and that's Arnie Sparons. Oh, you'd like to, okay. I have two people this evening.
I'm not gonna comment on what the council just did there. Anyway, I'm Honorable Mayor, City Council members. My name is Arnie Sparons. I live in the sunny Glen neighborhood. And my question is simple: What does it take for the city council to acknowledge its citizens' concerns about short-term rentals? The problem with short-term rentals is full-time lodging businesses are operating in our residential neighborhoods. These are not our neighbors earning extra income by renting out a room or basement, but investors operating commercial lodging businesses. The city's own licensing data shows that over 80% of the STR business licenses issued are to absentee owners, mostly from urban Colorado areas and out of state. These are not the city's residents earning extra money at home. In the city's efforts to solve the STR problem, they first conducted a community engagement process. The number-one concern with STRs was community character. And if we examine the open-ended responses included in that bucket, it's straightforward what's being said: Dedicated lodging businesses do not belong in residential neighborhoods. That was the biggest concern in the survey, even ahead of number two, noise/parting, and number three, traffic and parking. So I think you all got a copy of the report. This is a quote from the report. "Responses tag community character include responses that mention lack of neighborliness, degradation of neighborhoods, interruption on daily life, or discomfort/anxiety of not knowing neighbors. Simply put, dedicated lodging businesses do not belong in residential neighborhoods. And yet, the city council could never acknowledge this concern, let alone take action to address it. The concern was always explicitly clear. This number-one concern could have easily been addressed with common sense approach to how planning is done for a community. Residential neighborhoods are for residents, and commercial districts where commercial businesses operate. Instead, the citizens had to stand up and call for the repeal of the Wild West SCR ordinance. When the city council subsequently failed to act again on the number-one concern, initiative was, I would like to say, successfully circulated, but we'll wait till we hear on that shortly, hopefully. Your voting constituency is clearly saying dedicated lodging businesses do not belong in residential neighborhoods. What does it take to listen and act, or at least listen and get out of the way? Most residential areas in Colorado have long ago embraced short-term rentals in their communities by allowing STRs and primary residences only. Instead, our city council keeps pushing to make Woodland Park a sanctuary city for STR investors by taking steps to allow these absentee owners to operate forever in our residential neighborhoods. That is simply not fair to our neighbors, who only ask that the character of their neighborhoods be preserved. These are not the people that loudly show up at city council meetings, but rather people that are trying to enjoy the slivers of peace and relaxation they can still find in their homes amidst the revolving door of strangers next door. One man I met with was a decades-long Woodland Park resident, and one of the pillars that built Woodland Park's business community. With his wife having passed away in recent years, he finds himself alone. Now two STRs replaced his neighbors. His plea was simple: I want to have neighbors again. Please listen to his plea. Thank you."
Thank you, Arnie. The next speaker would be Jerry Penland.
Okay.
My name is Jerry Penland, Woodland Park resident and voter. This is the number of petition signatures we got. Of course, we won't have 1,438 voters, but we'll be close. These are the numbers that don't like what you're trying to do to us. It's actually more. 75% of the homes we visited signed our citizens' initiative petition. But a lot of folks were not home when we knocked. So we know the number that support us is much higher than this. By stunning upset, with almost everybody saying we could not beat City Hall in an epic battle for the heart and soul of our city, we stopped your investor ordinance 1431. We waited and waited and waited for you to acknowledge our victory and move forward. However, your position was that we were a small, loud group that you didn't have to really worry about. We are so lucky that we live in one of 24 states that allows the citizens to move to a direct democratic process when their city leadership refuses to put the citizens first. You gave us no choice but to completely bypass you, our elected officials, to solve our short-term rental problem without you. We are in no way an anti-STR group, as you want to call us. We did not propose a total ban on STRs in our city, like many wanted us to do. We encourage primary resident STRs in our single-family residential neighborhoods. We strongly support our business community by encouraging STRs in our commercial and central business zoning districts, where we already have over 20 operating there. We encourage many more. If there are barriers to put more there, we can help you remove those barriers. That's not a problem. That can't be solved. 1438 are not listening to those who say ours had a fatal flaw. Somebody either didn't get the two city memos, refused to believe them, or simply can't accept defeat. We are doing nothing that will impact any non-business residents in Woodland Park. Or this is not about short-term visitors. It's clearly about short-term rentals. Section 5 of our petition, quote, "The clear intent of this paragraph is to not allow non-primary resident short-term rental units in single-family residential neighborhoods within the city." That's about as clear as you can get. 1438 can stop any proposed ordinance that is in conflict with our intent. The political math of our community is simple. It's 8,200 people, but just over 5,000 voters. The most votes cast in any Woodland Park municipal election was in April 2022, with 2,503 votes. 2,503 votes, 1,252 is all it takes to win any yes-no election in Woodland Park. Think about that. You should focus on revising Title V, Title V. Focus on Title V, even though you changed that a minute ago. That's what you should focus on. We have Title 18 covered. I'm almost finished. The citizens demand, with our petition, a special election that will show the tremendous support our home-ruled city has for our citizen short-term rental ordinance, not what you're trying to do to us. The citizens have spoken again. When will you start listening to your voters?
Sorry about that, guys. We were just looking over our rules of procedure for item, for the consent calendar, and the appropriate motion actually would be to withdraw the item from the consent calendar, not a vote of yes or no. It's either approve it or withdraw it. So I was just talking with Nina.
Yeah, because in the new rules of procedure, that the presiding officer should inquire if any councilor wishes an intu- withdrawn from the consent count.
So when I asked for a motion, I should have asked for a motion?
To withdraw.
To withdraw.
Should I, does that then precipitate a new vote? If you would, if the presiding, if you would like to carry that, otherwise. The result would be the same. Yes, that's the same, so.
But.
Got it for the future.
Yeah. I think just to put on record that the motion should have been to withdraw, but the result would have been the same, so. But the wording was wrong. So now I know, and we know.
And then just a correction for what I advised Councilmember Zulaga. It's, when you ask for an ordinance to be placed on, it still would be the consents calendar, and then you would just have that vote, whether to withdraw it from the consent calendar and discuss or not. And that's just according to your guys' new rules of procedure. Well, Nina, if we go back and change the vote, and my motion is withdrawn and then resubmitted as move to withdraw from the calendar, would that allow Councilman Zulaga then to introduce it to add it to new business? Yes, because that's the time to do it, under this time, the additions and deletions, and then, yes.
We've done that before.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to say earlier.
So how would that work, girl?
I don't know.
Okay, or what'd you say?
I think so.
Okay, so we can go ahead, we're gonna just revisit item 5 so that we do it appropriately.
And then you inquire, then you counsel.
Right.
Then for the record, should I withdraw my motion, or do we just simply negate it?
I think we withdraw, and I ask for the appropriate motion. Okay, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Just logistically, from what I just heard Nina say, does that take us back to point four? I mean, we've withdrawn, and then do we go back to four to do what you're suggesting, or no?
You can still make the motion from that.
I know, this is not item.
Even though we've done four already? Okay.
You know what, I'm gonna, hold on, I'm gonna clarify the record here with reviewing the rules. Consent calendars for items that have been previously discussed or reviewed by council. And that's why it goes on the consent calendar, because we don't need discussion. This ordinance, I've never seen it, I haven't read it, I haven't discussed it. I had mentioned to the clerk earlier that I didn't believe that it was in the appropriate place to begin with. Technically, it might fall into that, but under our rules, it's items that have been previously discussed by the council can be reviewed without further explanation based on the information delivered to council by the administration. can be reviewed without further explanation based on the information delivered to council by the administration or are so routine or technical in nature that passage is likely.
But the city clerk, you mentioned there's another part of the procedures that says how to, if a council member asks for an ordinance to be placed, it goes on the consent calendar. Is that correct?
I'm just saying what we've done in the past, and we've done it as recently as two meetings ago. First of all, things that are on the consent calendar, I have to kind of disagree respectfully. Necessarily, the council has not seen. Every time we put an initial posting on there for an ordinance, council is seeing it for the first time. So I would say that I don't feel that that's accurate. Second of all, in the past, previously, since these rules have been adopted, we've had it on the consent calendar, and you guys have made a motion to take it off the consent calendar, because we've had minutes, we've had many different things, and you say, I want to speak about this, so can we take it off? And we've taken it off. We've done the consent calendar, and then you guys spoke about it separately.
Right.
It doesn't get moved anywhere else. It comes off the consent, and then you have a discussion about it and then vote on it separately. That's what you've done as recently as two meetings ago. It's your prerogative of what you do. I'm just telling you what we've done.
And usually, we do it with the city business, because they are so routine. So I think that this is different, though, than what routine, like a contract being approved or signature, so on and so forth. But I think what I want to do is just for the record, instead of rehashing things, this is our lesson learned. If you guys want to put it on next agenda, you can always put it on next agenda. And then just make sure it's in the right place, and we'll go about it with the right order.
Where would you like to see it on the calendar, then, if what Suzanne's saying isn't the appropriate way of putting? Because lots of ordinances in initial posting have been put there, and you have told me very clearly we're not to talk about it. We're just moving it on to public discussion.
Right.
And some of those I've had a problem with, and going, well, I want to talk about it in advance before it gets there.
And we have removed stuff to have discussion.
You guys have had, here's a, for instance, you've had contracts on the consent agenda. Councilmember Neil's had questions about the contracts. We've taken them off the consent calendar, so then you can discuss and talk about them. So that opportunity is available to council, and you get to decide that this is your meeting.
Yeah, and we can, we, we take it off the consent, vote for the consent, and we consider that separately during the consent calendar item.
Correct. So, so for next time, if you want to bring it back to the agenda, you can put it under consent. But when I call for a motion, instead of everybody just sitting there, somebody's got to make a motion to remove it or withdraw, and then it's, and then.
Or a motion to approve.
Or, yeah, a motion to approve. So, and that's how it'll work.
I think this is what Councilmember Zulaga was asking. He obviously invited me to be in the council for discussion.
Right.
Would it be better to put it on the new business than it's?
Or do you want to discuss it this evening? There's no, do you want to table it? Is that what I hear you saying?
Okay. Right. So, so for the sake of time this evening, let's bring it back to the agenda and do it the right way. And if we make a motion to withdraw, it can still be discussed as well, because it's, because that's what our rules of procedure say.
So I think we should vote on that, because we have, we're tabling it to the October fifth meeting for initial posting. Is what I hear you saying. If you want to bring it back to the next agenda.
Yeah.
The twenty-first, excuse me, the twenty-first. The initial posting, so we would have to change the public hearing date, which would be October fifth.
Yeah.
So.
Does that mess you up?
It doesn't mess me up at all.
Okay.
No, I just, I just need to, and I need it on the record. I need it on the record of what we're doing, because this is important.
Right.
Well, that's, I say, let's bring it to next. If there's discussion that you want to just do it over again, and there's a vote to do over, then we can do that.
Well, the item, the item is brought by Councilwoman Connors, so it seems like it would be more place to say, well, we want to bring back or not. And they just ask getting where to put it.
Right.
I would say new business.
And I'm saying it can go, it can go under consent. And even if someone makes the motion to withdraw, we can still have conversation, because a motion to withdraw can open dialogue. The motion to vote no, there's no dialogue, but our rule of withdraw creates dialogue.
So, given this new insight, is this done for this evening, or because we're re-examining this? Can it be discussed this evening and then brought back to the calendar for the twenty-first, and we've settled some of that?
Right. Thank you. That's what I'm asking.
Do tonight, too.
Is, is if you guys want to redo it now.
From what, well, I personally would like to see us redo it and talk about it off the consent calendar. We've had even input from some of the community as well, which could even be helpful in that.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's just take item four over again, or I'm sorry, item five A, the consideration of ordinance fourteen fifty-nine. And are there any council members that wish for the item to be withdrawn from the consent calendar?
Well.
To discuss.
I, I'd like to suggest that we remove it from the consent calendar so we can discuss.
Because the other, the other part of this is, or you don't have to have it withdrawn, and the clerk can pull up the motion to approve, and then you can vote on the motion, whether you want it approved to move on or not. So you don't have to have a motion to withdraw, or you can have a motion to withdraw for conversation.
So I make a motion to withdraw it from this consent calendar so we can discuss it in some appropriate place in our agenda. Does that, Carol, does that?
I'll second.
All right. I don't.
You know, we don't need a motion.
So just remove it off the consent calendar and discuss it.
That's what we've done in the past.
As we've done in the past.
Like I, no, we haven't voted. I specifically remember, I, I'm sorry, I'm picking on you, Councilmember Neil, but I specifically remember you saying, I need, I want to ask some questions about the contract. So we pulled it off. We didn't vote on it.
Yeah.
We voted on the consent calendar, and then we answered your questions, then voted on that separately.
Yep.
And I believe that's what our procedures say.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to have questions on the.
Correct, correct. Exactly, right. Oh, well, yeah, well. Kelly, do you want me just to simply make that motion? We just do much simpler, okay?
We don't need a motion to withdraw, though.
But Kelly's making a great point. I just moved to approve the consent calendar to move this on to a public comment.
Yes, you can do that.
So let's just, that's my, that's my motion. I need a second.
And then the original.
I'll second.
You strike.
Here's the thing, there's nothing on the consent calendar to approve if you take, moving it.
We're not removing it.
It's this, so it was the original motion that you had on our electronic question. Do you still have that?
So, yeah, the original.
Yeah, so just bring that back up. And that's the vote, then, by redoing this, by, by the motion that Robert has made.
The vote is to set the public hearing for September twenty-first.
Correct, correct.
Correct. Okay.
Right.
So we're not withdrawing it. We're now voting on this?
That's Nina's way in on that. Is that correct?
It, it depends. So your, your, your procedures do say that the presiding officer can inquire if any council member wishes an item to be withdrawn from the consent calendar, meaning to discuss. So the mayor had asked that, and if you are saying you, you can make the motion that you're making, or you can say, I would like it to be withdrawn, to be discussed. Because it says, if the matter is withdrawn, the presiding officer shall place the item on an appropriate place in the agenda for deliberation at the current or future council meeting. That's what you're, I mean, for your own reasons.
But let me ask this question. Generally speaking, when an ordinance is brought to the council for initial posting, it's not on, what, we don't discuss it. We just say, yes, let's move it to initial posting. No, let's not.
Right.
So. Again, what? Okay.
I think the issue is with an ordinance, we have never not moved it to public hearing, because they're generally routine items that you've seen before. I, I think that's what's causing the main issue here, so.
No, we've denied them, since I've been on council.
We've denied.
But I think, I don't believe at that time we were using the consent calendar. I think it's, I think since the process has changed in the last few months, it's changed the, the way that we're doing business.
True. Sorry, the sentence before the one we're reading says, "Anywhere the council shall have the right to remove any item from the consent calendar." Therefore, under the item, and it's mis-titled, but it says approval of agenda order and content. I'm going to guess that means additions, deletions, or corrections. The presiding officer shall inquire if any council member wishes for an item to be withdrawn from the consent calendar. If a matter is withdrawn, the presiding officer shall place the item at an appropriate place on the agenda for deliberation at the current or future council meeting. Obviously, it could be restated, but.
So the only error I see is in the wording of the motion that was made, because the motion should have just been made to vote on.
That was my original motion.
Right, to just vote on whether it goes forward to public hearing or not.
That was my original motion.
So. And then, and we still need a motion to get it, to have the clerk place it for vote on consent calendar.
So is, so my motion that I made was, I moved to approve ordinance fourteen.
You made the right motion.
Oh, I did, okay.
Yeah.
And I thought it was seconded.
And it was.
Okay.
And then Nina was just making the point, though, that.
There's options.
There are other options.
This is, and that's a new part of your procedure.
So you had a second, and then Suzanne can pull the vote, and we can vote.
We're gonna, we're gonna do this one verbally as well. So the motion is to move ordinance fourteen fifty-nine to public hearing for September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Case?
No.
Neil?
No.
Zulaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
No.
Labar?
No.
Thank you. Same result, same result.
Better procedure.
Yes.
Now it's procedural, correct, okay.
Right. Okay, we are on to, we have no seven, no not, no eight, nine, we've got nine A ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, and Karen is presenting.
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. You have in front of you this evening an ordinance that would potentially designate a property here in Woodland Park as a local historic landmark. So I have some background information, just to provide context. So we all work from the same set of information and vocabulary around historic landmarks. So specifically, historic designation, there's different types of designations. And these are the four main categories that you see. And starting with literally a global scale, there's world heritage sites. And these are recognized by the World Heritage Committee or UNESCO. These are landmarks and natural areas of such unique value. They are part of the heritage of all humankind and not just individual nations. And the point I'm going to get to with all this is that these, these, these different sets that, that things get looked at, so that's one of them. And the next one is national designation, and that's recognized by the Secretary of the Interior here in the United States as possessing significance at a national level. There's also state registrations or designations, and that's done through the state of Colorado. And then here, what we're talking about tonight is a local designation, so that's specifically within our community and the criteria that we have set in place. And with that, there are aspects of integrity. Most communities and states really do defer back to the National Park Service and or some set, some set of that, subset of that, sorry. And so National Park Service and Colorado Historical Society both look at these, the same seven categories. And those are the setting where the, the resource sets, the location, specifically exactly where it is on the land, not just what's going on around it, design, materials, workmanship, feeling, and then other associations. Here in Woodland Park, as part of establishing our Historic Preservation Committee, we have Resolution Number six oh two, series two thousand and three, that actually sets out our criteria for when we review these requests, and I'll get to that a little bit later. And then when we looked at our community as a whole through the comprehensive planning process, there is actually an entire chapter in there, chapter thirteen, that talks about all arts, culture, and community heritage. And within that chapter, the Community Heritage Objective one point two specifically addresses our aspiration is to encourage preservation of identified historical resources, and that's subject to review by staff, that these different things get reviewed. So there's other subsets of more specific things under that in the comp plan. But this is talked about from, from that perspective. So one of the big questions we get when it comes to historic designations is, are there limitations? Within our own municipal code, section two point four four point zero four zero F, designated landmark alterations. So basically saying here that no one, if your building has been landmarked, you cannot do any new construction alteration, removal, or moving or demo of that landmark without first obtaining a written landmark alteration decision from the Historic Preservation Committee. So yes, you can potentially do all of that, but it has to be done with the committee's review first. And if, for some reason, you're saying, no, I absolutely want to demo this building, I've got to rehab this site, you end up with a decision to remove that historic designation status. And then any permits around that kind of work are still required, so that committee review doesn't negate the, the need for the other appropriate permits. So there's also opportunities within designations, specifically there's opportunities for tax credits on, especially a privately owned property, and then the ability to access grant funds to help take care of that property. So quick little commercial here. The Historic Preservation Committee this year, as part of their work plan, we're doing an outreach informational program, and that'll be in a couple of weeks here on September nineteenth, from three to five here in this room. And we're about to start doing a bunch of other advertisement around that. So the other question I've gotten is, are there other properties in Woodland Park that have been done at a local level? And the answer is yes. There is fourteen of them. You can find this information on the city's website under the section that addresses historic preservation. And so this is a map that shows the location of those buildings. And then on the left, you've got the list of every single one of those buildings, as well as the ordinance number that was passed, establishing that as a local landmark. Interesting to note, the U-Pass Cultural Center is one of those buildings that does have a local designation. And, you know, the city continues to take care of that particular property and make improvements, so that that designation has not impacted our ability to use that property or take care of it. So with this request this evening, it's known as the Roberts House, and it's at seven five zero County Road twenty-one here in Woodland Park. And it's way down here at the south end of the Walmart property. So in this aerial photo, this black box is the Walmart building, the parking lot's there. So this is Highway twenty-four, as you head down the hill, and it's this little site way down here. There's a little sliver, it's track D in the Walmart Center subdivision. There's a little sliver. It's track D in the Walmart Center subdivision. The area is zoned PUD, and it's actually a citizen in our area, Steve Plute, who has brought this application forward. This property is owned by the City of Woodland Park. And our system is set up, the ordinance is set up, so that, yes, a citizen can make this kind of a request. And within our ordinance, there's provisions for when a property owner has consented and when they have not. The process is the same, where it goes through Historic Preservation Committee for their public hearing and recommendation, and then the city council. The the citizens just involved in in the whole thing and unaware of it, even if they didn't sign the application. So with this particular property, most folks knew it as the Junction House. They understand the fact that we referred to it as the Robert Huts. Created a little bit of confusion. It is significant for its importance as a stage stop or way station for travelers on their way to points west. You know, as they came out of Colorado Springs, the primary clientele were freight wagons. And the original Junction House was constructed in eighteen seventy-three and burnt down in nineteen twelve. And then there were a number of other outbuildings out in this area and across the dirt road. There was a couple other barns over there. Those burnt down about two thousand and two and two thousand and three in that timeframe. So the house we're talking about tonight, the Roberts House, this cabin was constructed in nineteen fifteen by M.J. Taylor. And there's a number of additions that have been constructed. Windows have been changed out, scalp fascia trim added, and a number of these things were done through the forties. And then in the fifties, there was a deck and a mudroom addition that was constructed. And then the east shed roof addition was also constructed. So these are some older photos that show what it would have looked like circa nineteen twenty. And then another photo here at the bottom from nineteen eighty-five. And this slide gives you a couple of photos of what it looks like today, or complements of Google Street View. So when you were headed southbound, you know, out of town, that's the the view that you see from the highway if you're not paying attention to the road. And then coming back up the the highway, that's the the view you see from the other direction. So the the building is this little brown one, and then this is one of the other outbuildings that still remains on the same piece of property we're talking about. So when we look at this, oh, actually, the the city, as part of our our duties in in preserving assets, we've done two different inventories in the community of a variety of properties. One of the inventories was done in two thousand and six, where we reviewed thirty-nine properties, and then twenty sixteen, we looked at thirty properties. This particular property was looked at in two thousand and six. And so part of what I'm going to reference here is the the inventory form that identified elements related to this. And that inventory form, they use the National Park Service and Colorado Historical Society criteria. So those same seven things that I mentioned earlier. And there, in that section of the form where they talk about the integrity, they identify that it retains many of its rustic style character defining elements, such as the log construction, small pane windows, and an overhanging roof. And then additions have been partially, or the additions that have been added partially obscure obscure these elements, which change that design material and workmanship of the building. And within this section of that inventory, they flag that this building no longer has sufficient inventory to convey its significance on a national or state level, but still has sufficient integrity to be locally landmarked because of its association with the Robertson Taylor families. And there's also enough historic fabric left to maintain its integrity at this local level. And then their findings on that particular form. So this is slightly repetitive, but again, they stated that the inventory did not believe that property to have significance at that national state or state level. And then their conclusion that, again, repeating that it's lost some of that significance, but that it still has local significance for its association with the Robertson Taylor families. So our or our resolution we have in place with the criteria we review here at a local level, there's actually three of those. And what the structure must be at least fifty years old. Two, that the property is historically significant through one or more of these items, which would be architectural design, association with a historical event, period, or person, physical impact and location within the city of Woodland Park, and potential to provide important information concerning the history of Woodland Park. And then the third one is the structure should have sufficient original or accurately restored materials that maintain its original historic character. So on August eighth, the Historic Preservation Committee held their hearing on this particular item, and they made these particular findings that the house is more than fifty years old, having been built in nineteen fifteen. The property, as described in the staff report and the two thousand and six architectural inventory form, is historically significant due to property and persons associated with its ownership. And then although the building has been added to over time, the main cabin is still similar to its original rustic style and character. So with all that in front of you this evening, you have an ordinance, ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight, series two thousand and three. And the recommendation would be to approve this ordinance, which would designate a local landmark, a local historic landmark for the Roberts House located at seven fifty Colorado or County Road twenty-one, as requested by Steve Plute, a citizen of the community. And then I'm sorry, I do need to, Suze and Nina, there's a slight boo-boo in the proposed ordinance. And it's under the finding section number two. It says the property, as described by the attached architectural inventory, I would suggest delete the word attached and insert two thousand and six architectural inventory. Because we typically don't do that kind of attachment to an ordinance, and that would reference the appropriate document. That's the conclusion. Questions?
Council questions or comments? Karen?
One question. So should we approve this? Where's the funding expected to come from for its restoration?
Consistent with the the city's approach to leverage grants whenever possible, the primary sources of that really is through the state of Colorado. And while they might not consider it in its current condition appropriate for designation at the state level, by having a local landmark designation in place, it opens the door to still access some of those those same funds.
State funds.
State. And I think there is potentially some other grant opportunities out there that we could look at, but that's that's the primary one. And all of those grants typically have match requirements, but there's at least money that you're able to leverage.
And can I go ahead?
Go ahead.
And my second question is, so the two families that are referenced here, are they, any of them still active players in the community and willing to participate in some of that restoration?
That's probably a better question for the the applicant, Mr. Plute. He's got some history, and I think one of the the descendants of the family member is here. So I'm going to defer that if you don't mind.
Well, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Well, I, first question was for Erin. Has any money been set aside for any maintenance or restoration of that building in the city budget?
Not at this time.
And I know when the city acquired that building or buildings, there was an inventory of items and and the structures themselves. And we've done nothing since that point in time, I'm assuming.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
And my second question is maybe for Karen. Often with this designation, I know it does open the the opportunity for us to apply for grants. Normally, we would also place a plaque on the building. My concern would be placing a plaque on that building now where it might be gone the next day. So I would not recommend putting a plaque on the building at this time.
Noted. Thank you.
Karen, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, since it's just a local designation and not state or national, I know that makes it easier. But should the city need to to do something with that land in the future? What does it take to undesignate it then?
It goes back through this this similar process to definitely to the Historic Preservation for their committee, their review. And since they're the ones that really look to preserve the assets, I would be surprised if they came back with anything other than, we recommend you don't do that. We want to keep the building. And it's, I guess, kind of like medical advice. There's a lot of stuff we do against the doctor's advice. And I believe that still comes back to city council for another another ordinance to to basically hit the undo button.
Okay, because how large is that swath of land that the city owns?
I do not know the the applicant knows, point four five acres.
Okay, so it's not very large. Okay. Because I'm just trying to, you know, I I like the idea of the designation, but I just want to be careful with future decisions that we wouldn't mess something up.
It's this, you know, somewhat small and odd shape. That's the other challenge, as you saw in that aerial. It's kind of long and skinny. I believe at different points in time, there's been conversation about, is this potentially a trailhead? That maybe there's some other other parking or other attribute that gets further restored or developed there.
Okay.
So, but that's the only thing I'm aware of.
Then that wouldn't interfere too much with that.
Yeah, and just a point of information that the stagecoach that was on the DDA property, there has been discussions about that would be an appropriate place to move the stagecoach is by the the Junction House.
Very good. Okay, that was my question. Counsel, do you have any other questions or comments?
Just the ones from the family.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, if the family would like to come to the podium and and
The applicant and yeah.
And applicant, yeah.
Hello, my name is Steve Plute, and thanks for having me here tonight. And first, I'd like to say in regard to demolition of a historic landmark, unless there's local ordinances in play, you could have a property designated, a building designated as a state historical landmark on Monday, and if on Tuesday you feel like burning it down, you have all the right in the world. It's still your property. You can still burn it down.
Yeah, I think it was the national one that makes it. I think once you're on the national.
Even for a national recognized landmark, you could do the same thing. It's still your property. It's a misconception that once things are designated, you've lost all control. The only thing you've lost is your right to apply for grants and your tax status.
Okay, thank you for that.
And then to Carol's question on before that, I had something, geez, I can't, I had a response for you, but I can't remember.
About the stuff that was collected.
Yeah, I I know at one time the Director of Public Works had gone through the building and just to, you know, hopefully there was buried treasure in there, but I don't think there ever was.
There is a beautiful hardwood floor in there. It's amazing that it's in the condition it's in. But that house, as Karen pointed out, was built in nineteen fifteen. And in nineteen nineteen, Edith and William Roberts moved there. Not too long after they got married. And right here is Hildegard Davis. She's a Roberts. And she is the granddaughter of Edith and William. And Hildegard has lived here her entire life. I won't say how old she is, but I've lived here sixty-five years, and she's lived here about twenty longer than I have. But that house, the William and and Edith Roberts, especially during the depression years, they provided milk, butter, cream, cheese, eggs to the community. They delivered their products in a donkey-pulled cart. And they even delivered it to up to Carroll Lakes. If you know where that's at, it's up on top of Rampart with that same donkey and cart. The Roberts family first came to Woodland Park in the mid eighteen eighties. And Edith Roberts, her maiden name was Loughlin. She was born in Green Mountain Falls in eighteen eighty-six. And her family, the the Loughlin family, are pioneers of the Green Mountain Falls area. So Hildegard here, with her lifelong memory, residence here, she's probably more than likely the oldest family living here in Woodland Park that's still active, and and Hildegard is still active. She's been a four-age leader since, I think, like nineteen fifty-five. I'd have to check with her, but around fifty-five or so, she's been a four-age leader in this community. She's been involved in many other things, and she's still active. The Roberts House there, the Colorado Midland and the Midland Terminal, the tracks ran within a few yards of the back of their house, in between their house and eastbound Highway twenty-four. They would make flag stops there and other stops there for coffee and refreshments. This was before Woodland Park even existed, back when it was the Junction House days. It's just a very historic property. The house is there now is very historic. I I sure hope you guys really seriously consider designating this as a local landmark. And once it is, oh, I remember what I was going to say to Carol, once it is designated local, then you can apply for state grants and tons of other grants, like CDOT offers historical grants. A lot of people don't know that. El Pamar grants are open to them. There there's grants available in many, many different places once it's designated as a local landmark.
That's
So that's about all I got to say. Hildegard, do you have anything to say? Please do it, she says. For everybody, she says. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, counsel, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance designating a local historic landmark for the Roberts House located at seven fifty CR twenty-one, as requested by Steve Plute, a citizen of the community.
Frank with the insertion, the inserted twenty, two thousand and six.
The two thousand and six real estate inventory.
But do you?
The date insertion.
No, I I have that amendment for the record. So you can say as amended, but I do have to say we do have to do public comment.
Do we have anyone signed up?
We do not. I just have to officially say that. But we do not have anyone signed up.
Then I'll second.
Thank you. Counsel, you may vote. I just need you to vote. Everybody else is voting. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Sure.
I'd like to thank all of you folks for this. This is quite an honor for me. I'm sure it was quite an honor for my family also. You know, my daddy used to use that, he was, he's the one that delivered the milk and eggs and butter to all those people. He was just a young boy. And I think he called the donkeys Jasper. Anyway, you know, it was him that did the delivering. My grandma was quite the seamstress. She could sew anything that you wanted, coats or whatever. I have a quilt that was made for her. It's back in, I think, nineteen oh four or something. Anyway, it's a crazy quilt that that was given to her when she was a young girl, probably about sixteen. You know, I'd like to see that somehow be tied into with this lovely place. You know, it'd mean a lot to me to see if that could be there, too. So thank you, thank you, thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
What Hildegard is saying, she's got a lot of the original furnishings she would like to see put back in there. And I also wanted to mention, too, I forgot, the additions that are on that cabin right now are not they're more up against it than they are a wall knocked out and the addition built. And I have a few friends at History Colorado speaking to them about it. And they feel that if the additions were removed, especially the mudroom in the front, it really distracts from the building. They feel, and it's not guaranteed, but it would be eligible to be put up considered as a state historical landmark, but we have to get rid of the additions. But this is where local landmark But this is where local landmark designation with the grants that are available, or hopefully we could get these additions out of there and then reapply to the state for historical designation. So thank you very much, guys. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we're off to item B, and that's ordinance fourteen fifty-seven. And just for counsel and the public's information, because this was tabled from August seventeenth, there is no public comment on this item. And also, counsel, did all of you have the opportunity to review the notes sent to us by our attorney? And Madam Mayor, I will recuse myself again. Just don't forget me. Okay, we won't.
It was just long went long last time. Okay.
Okay, so with that, CJ, if you have anything, anything you want to touch on that topic?
Thank you, Mary and counsel. So no new information is being presented tonight, so staff does not have a presentation.
Okay, very good. So counsel, we can have a motion or are there any questions or comments? Yeah. It's one of my favorite songs.
So you want comments now?
If there's
Yeah, I just yeah, based on what are what what can
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen fifty-seven, series twenty twenty-three as presented on the agenda.
My comments before it goes to a motion.
There's a motion on the table. You can have discussion after we get a second. Yeah. After a second discussion. Either or. It can be either or, so.
I'll set it based on the attorney's guidance.
Thank you.
So it from my perspective, it's our responsibility to adjudicate fairly to all of our citizens. And so I want to direct your attention to level two water restrictions that have been explained on our city website. And well, to me, it's relevant because I want it on the record that as we deliberate on this, that I understand what the attorney says.
So so hold on, you understand what the attorney says, but you're choosing not to follow their guidance.
Correct. I have free will to make my comments into the public record. The attorney had her opportunity to do the same.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. And and does the public have the opportunity to know her legal opinion?
So I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting due to my maternity leave and there was a little, you know, lost in the shuffle, but I believe that you had asked, you had adjourned it for a specific question. Is that correct? And that was related to the water. You were asking about the water usage and and such as a factor. And in our current code, I do not see it as an objective factor for which to to determine an amendment to a PUD. So that's that's a summary of of it. So just make sure, you know, I always I always instruct you for a procedural standpoint, look at the code, make your decision based on the on the sections of the code which are identified in staff report, particularly for a PUD amendment.
So and that's, you know, that's a great point. It's a PUD amendment. We can either say yes to the PUD amendment or my understanding, we can send it back for review to say, yeah, in in on one level, yeah, I I support the idea of doing a PUD amendment. However, I have serious concerns that we're changing it to something that affects something which is near and dear to all of us, and that is water usage, water consumption. And from what has been presented to us in this packet, there is a huge difference between ninety-five gallons per vehicle usage versus fifteen point something gallons if it's recycled. So for us to simply say, yeah, this is great. Let's do this PUD amendment. I would suggest we send it back to planning to get a review on the requirement. We have no control. My biggest concern is if we say yes to this change in PUD, the way things sit now, we have no control if this blows out our water usage with a whether they do it right or wrong. So if you have a company that is not following the reclamation, which would only be a fifteen gallon usage per vehicle, and they go for a day, a week, a month using ninety-five gallons per vehicle, that's a huge consideration to the city. So although I support the idea of looking at a change in PUD, I think it really needs to go back to planning and our water can not just KIP but a consultancy to look at how do we protect? How do we protect our water now? So if we navigate that ground first, then we can have this reintroduced and we can look at whether we want to change a PUD. But I think, given what I see in this, I would like to see it go back to planning. I would like staff recommendations of how we can protect the city's water usage.
Mayor, yes. Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, would those kinds of conditions and review be better served at the time of the application for the actual development and not necessarily in the change of zoning?
Part of your challenge here with this is yes, the question right now is an ordinance to allow this as a potential other use on this property. If that were approved, it's essentially a use by right within that zone district. So there's not a conditional use permit process that that would go through where those kind of conditions could be potentially attached to that.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to verify.
So now that we have a motion on the table, there's not an option to explore it the way I'm suggesting. Oh, unless the motion or all right.
There can be, I mean, there can be discussion amongst council members, though.
You can't.
Well, I've said, I've said in the in the the last meeting when we had discussion, I I see in natural incentive built in for a a business to control their expenses through controlling the water use. I think there's there's some incentive there naturally. I can't say that it's actually going to happen. But I know that if it were my business, I keep a pretty close eye on my expenses. And if I can find a way to cut those, I do. And and water usage is expensive. And I would think that there would be a natural incentive for the business owner to keep those systems working. If they're going to install them, why would they not keep them operational? So I just, maybe I just have a lot of faith in. So my so my issue is actually not the water. Mine is the noise and the traffic. And and so for me, it's not the water. It's I I use that intersection like you use the intersection by Bear Works every day. And it's a nightmare now. It's not going to get better. I think it's better suited as the way it is currently planned as a restaurant with a drive-through or whatever than it is to make it a car wash. That's just my, that's just my view. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call the vote. In your opinions can be reflected in your vote.
Counsel, you may vote. Oh, public comment, ma'am. Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
So used to saying that. And I wrote that on the agenda, no public comment.
I'm having no joy. No.
I'm not getting votes from I have some of you, but not all of you. Okay, let's do a manual vote. Neil.
Yes, yes.
Zulawaga.
No.
Nikai.
No.
Connors.
No.
LeBar.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Okay, we have a tie. So it's three, three, because council member Harvey is recused from the vote.
So mayor.
Yes.
Is it appropriate for me to now make a a different motion? Or are we done?
We're done.
So what happens next? Comes back next week.
Wait a minute, it was a tie. It was a tie vote. So it failed.
Tie fails.
But he wants to make a different motion pertaining to the same ordinance.
Want me to pull it out again?
I think you can.
I think we need to have a class on this.
So we've been told in the past, if some if it doesn't move, you can make a different motion on the same ordinance and Robert has a different motion for the same ordinance.
So it's a no. It's the same.
Are you, do you want me to look and see if you can make another motion or because we understand what the tie means, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
That it's it's
So this means it's failed, correct?
Yes.
So then I just leave it there. That's fine.
Are you in agreement, Nina?
Yep.
We need a majority vote to and this did not pass.
Does it come back?
I thought it comes back one time, one time.
That's similar ordinance language, but I I mean, we could see, but this for for a quasi judicial public hearing, I was in front of you, you know, the applicant came in front of you and it didn't it didn't pass. They could always go to back to planning with a different application. But unless Suzanne tells me something different from your procedures, but typical
Exactly.
And ma- mayor, can I request that the attorney's opinions be entered in the public record so that the citizens can actually see what the what the legal parameters were in this?
It's to protect the city's interest, especially given the vote. I would advise against that at this point. I gave a verbal opinion. So that, but now that, yeah, that's that's all I'll say.
Yeah, her verbal opinion was follow the rule of the PUD and you guys didn't do that. It's your opinion. You you voted on based on your opinion. So well, one person made traffic, another person made water. So let's be clear, and that's on the record verbally. So the applicant can either redo the application with planning to see if there's any way they can satisfy counsel or they can go to court. So. So now we're off to ten new business. We have none, eleven off to report. So I just have a few items. Saturday, September ninth from eight AM to three PM around Memorial Park will be the annual Cruise Above the Clouds Car Show. Hundreds of custom and classic vehicles will be there for a fun-filled day of automotive excellence along with great food, old time rock and roll, and this event is free to the public. Also on Saturday, September ninth from seven AM to two PM at Woodland Park High School, the Key Club will be hosting the citywide garage sale. And that's free for the public and the sales benefit Woodland Park High School Key Club. There's also on Monday, nine eleven, the nine eleven ceremony. It begins at nine AM and it's held at Lions Park and it's open to everyone. Councilmember Case. I have nothing. Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
I have a DDA report. Two things of significance. It was held on September fifth at seven thirty right here. The first thing is Brian Johnson from Forge Climbing LLC has approached the DDA with an idea. He's moving forward with putting in a climbing gym in what is referred to as the Old Auction Barn. He purchased the distressed building and he has had architectural drawings started on it. But in the future, he may be coming to the DDA asking for a TIF. But this is just to let the community know that there's the possibility on the old auction barn property to do a climbing gym. And the intent of the investment group, which is about ten people that are local here, mostly dads, is to give kids something to do in Woodland Park. So a climbing gym gym being added to our community. The second thing is the council, I was asked to advise the council that the legal services this year have been a little bit larger than what was expected. And the DDA may be coming in with requests to increase the legal service line item from three to five thousand more. Just be aware of it. That's they haven't done the budget yet, but looking at the numbers, we think we're going to come in for a three to five K bump up. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Zulawaga.
Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. We have had a immediate resignation from Jeanette. She's got change going on in her world. So if somebody is interested in joining Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, please submit an application.
Very good. Councilmember Nikai.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Connors.
Thank you, mayor. I have trouble pushing that button for some reason. The Historic Preservation Committee has, I'd like to thank Steve Plute and Linda Allred for their work at our city cemetery doing the repairs to the headstones. The committee is also working on this year's poster for our historic awareness for our city.
What's the theme going to be this year?
Trains. It's awesome. And then did we mention the nine eleven?
I did, but you're welcome to mention it.
No, no, that's good. Ceremony at nine o'clock at Lions Park?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Harvey.
I have nothing.
All right, city attorney.
I have nothing. And admittedly, I'm neglecting our promise. So me, we're hired that the city attorney will always have a joke, but I'm not the funny one in the crowd.
City manager.
I have nothing.
All right, very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.